Will the clerk please call the rule?
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman O'Brien is present. Alderwoman Timmons is absent. Alderman Moran is absent. Alderman Thibodeau?
Here.
Alderman Gavea?
Here.
Alderman Lopez is absent. Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderman Senate?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Thiebault?
Here.
Alderman Cleese is absent. Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly is absent. And Alderman Wilshire?
I'm here. I did hear from Alderman Cleese. She's at the Wood Three Town Hall with the mayor. She should be here shortly. We have a quorum. Also joining us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and John, CFO John Griffin. Communications.
We do have one from Laurie Wilshire, reason calling the Special Board of Alderman meeting relative to resolution R-25121.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Business unfinished at the previous meeting.
Before us this evening is R-25121, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to establishing a limitation on annual budgets.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President, for the purposes of discussion. I will move for final passage of R-24121 as amended.
You've all heard the motion? Discussion. Alderman Jettie?
So my first question is, when you said "as amended," have we amended this?
Yes. Yeah, there were.
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
Could someone remind me?
Attorney Bolton?
Yes, there was an amendment in regard to the definition of inflation factor that it could not go less than zero.
Okay, I remember that now. Okay, thank you. So I have other questions.
Alderman Jettie?
So I know that, you know, I thought that the problem that we were, one of the problems that we were trying to solve was the situation where, you know, we're trying to come up with a way of keeping the tax rate from increasing or controlling how much it would increase. And the problem that we've experienced, I think, that we've experienced in the past and we're trying to solve is that when we receive money from either a gift or from a grant from the federal government or from the state, which doesn't come from the taxpayers, so it really has no role or effect of increasing the tax rate or the amount of taxes that people are paying, which is what concerns most people, that under the previous spending cap, we were limited from spending money even though it wasn't coming from the taxpayers, wasn't having any effect on the amount that we're raising from the taxpayers. We were prohibited from spending that because it exceeded the inflationary increase. But when I read this, it talks about that the amount, the budget limit means the prior year's property tax levy increased by the inflation factor plus projected other revenues and net new construction revenue. So in that paragraph, you know, it does seem to allow for projected other revenues. Other revenues would include grants and gifts. But it would only be things that we're, that we know about, that we're anticipating. If something comes in after we pass the budget, then it looks like, under paragraph C, that unless an override has been voted in accordance with section D below, the Board of Aldermen shall adopt a budget authorizing expenditures from the general fund and enterprise and special revenue funds at or below the budget limit as above defined. Furthermore, following adoption of the budget, absent and override, no additional supplemental or special appropriation during the fiscal year when combined with the budgeted appropriations shall cause the budget limit to be exceeded. So if I'm reading that correctly, it sounds to me like, you know, if we know we're going to be getting a grant from the federal government, that doesn't count on the budget limit when we adopt the budget. But if after we adopt the budget, we get a grant, it seems like we have to vote by a supermajority of 10 votes to spend that additional money even though it has no effect on the tax rate or the amount that we're raising from the taxpayers. So could I get a clarification from Corporation Counsel on that?
Yes, the 10-vote supermajority to exclude things that are grants, gifts, and revenue, not from property taxes, that's in section E, which you did not read aloud. Apparently you read it at some point. And that's in there to provide for that circumstance. And it has to be in there because in order to exclude grants, gifts, and revenue from other means, the state enabling legislation requires a supermajority vote. So it could be nine, it could be 10, it could be 12. 10 is what the current charter language provides for other things. So it seemed appropriate to keep it at 10.
Could I follow up, please?
Yes, Alderman Jettie?
So state law does not allow us to say, you know, anything that doesn't come from the taxpayers, you know, we don't, you know, we can accept and spend without this limitation. We can't do that.
That's correct. RSA 49C 33 says, "A tax cap provision in the city charter may provide for specific exclusions for dedicated enterprise or other self-supporting funds or accounts, capital reserve funds, grants, or revenue from sources other than local taxes or interest in principal payments on municipal bonded debt or capital expenditures, which shall be by a supermajority vote as determined in the charter." So it has to be done this way.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All set? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so that is why the legislation anticipates putting grants and things like that into the budget because we can anticipate fairly accurately, well, we used to be able to fairly accurately these days, I don't know, but we know like what's coming in and what has a good shot of coming in and what doesn't. And because they're separated out into their own category, it doesn't really affect the tax rate, if you will. So you budget for those things, and if they come through, fantastic. If you get extra revenue, then we as a board can vote on a case-by-case basis to override the spending cap if it goes over the limitation. So that's kind of why it was structured the way that it was, was because of the state law. So that's that. I also wanted to suggest, I had a discussion with Mayor Donches, and he's not here yet, but about changing the inflation factor from the gross domestic product implicit price deflator for state and local government to simply the CPIU. I think the Consumer Price Index Urban is a lot more accessible to folks. It's easier to understand, and it's relatively the same on any given year, or at least on an average rolling basis, as the indicator that we use now. So with that said, I would make a motion to amend by replacing the current inflation factor with the CPIU, the Consumer Price Index Urban.
You've heard the motion. A discussion on that motion, Alderman Jettie?
Thank you. So you would know better than I, but wasn't it originally the CPIU? And it was changed to this gross domestic product implicit price deflator for state and local government for consumption expenditures and gross investment?
Yes.
For a reason?
Alderman Clemmons?
You could debate the last part of it, the "for a reason," but yes, it was voted on, and it was changed in about a 50-50 vote that went, that tilted slightly towards doing that.
I have Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons, so you're telling us that the mayor is on board with this particular change?
Yes.
Thank you. And also, Madam President, we have been joined at 7:08 by Alderman Cleese. She has been recorded as present. And we also have been joined by Alderman Lopez at 7:15, and it is recorded.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. In the current legislation, it accounts for the inflation factor to be for the preceding three years. Would that be the case in this change?
Yes, it's, yes, I anticipate with this motion just to change the inflation factor itself, the unit that measures it, not the rolling average.
So not the rolling average?
Correct. We're just changing the index.
Follow up, please?
Yes.
So whatever, so whatever the CPIU is for the current year going into the budget, that's the number that we're going to use?
It would be the average of the last three years.
So would be the average of the last three years?
Yes.
Can you, do you know, heading into this budget, I've seen the factor that we use now is going to be about 3.9%? Do you have an idea of what that CPIU is heading into?
I, no, but I can look it up. And that's the advantage I, that's the advantage of the CPIU, is that it's easy to look it up.
I think Mr. Griffin might have something to-
John Griffin, CFO, a couple of points. One is that number is 4.6, the average of the last three years. And secondly, investigating, trying to find, trying to figure out the SNLIPD is more difficult than it needs to be. In addition to that, unlike the CPIU that's relied on by everybody, this particular index has multiple updates, which is always a cause of frustration as well. So I would, as the mayor would and as Alderman Clemmons, I would support the change. People know what the CPIU is. They really don't know what the other index is. Thank you.
You all set? Alderman Sullivan?
Yep.
Alderman Dowd?
I believe that it changed by a question on the ballot at one point. I don't think it was a change to the charter, but I think it was a question on the ballot only, and that's why-
No, it was a charter change.
Was the charter changed? Yeah.
Anyone else? Motion is to amend. It's not online, right? Nope, okay. Alderman Lopez?
Just wanted to clarify. I was listening while I came in because I was running late. So it's not like I just showed up and am voting. I looked suspicious, so I thought I would clarify.
Good to know, Alderman Lopez. The motion is to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Alderman Clemmons?
Well, motion on the floor is for final passage as amended. I don't have much else to say myself.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I had, in coming tonight, I had hoped that we might be able to see a scenario laid out in front of us for the current year, so let's say fiscal 2024. If this legislation had been in place when we did that budget, how would that affect the number? Do we have that tonight?
I can tell you it would have made it less.
But do we have it tonight?
I don't.
Mr. Griffin?
John Griffin, CFO, tonight I have two exhibits, if you are interested.
Yes.
They're both related to the fiscal '26 budget. Again, as Alderman Thiebault likes to tell us, this isn't the proposed budget. This is just an example of the, how the current cap works. And you've seen that on February 10th. I've updated it a little bit, and you'll see how this particular modification of the budget index would, so I could pass that around if you would like.
That'd be great.
Join you with the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to clarify something while John's getting ready. You can't pass this tonight.
Okay.
We'll have to have an additional public hearing due to amendments.
One page.
Okay.
Just one piece of paper?
I think so, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, do you have an additional fiscal year '26 proposed budget, an extra copy? So I can give it to our administration assistant? Thank you, sir.
Lauren, yours?
Okay, so let's think back, excuse me, to a few weeks ago, February 10th, 2025. And that particular document was what's referred to as the City and Nashville Combined Budget Analysis in the fiscal '26 proposed budget. I updated it as of today. Not sure how many attended that meeting, but by way of recap, the way the current spending cap works is we take the appropriations from the previous year. We add the supplemental appropriations during that particular year. So for example, the Board of Aldermen approved a $456.6 million budget. We appropriated an additional $32.3 million of supplemental appropriations that included general fund, enterprise funds, grants, and special revenue funds, and capital project funds. Included in that $25 million, as you may recall, is the $15 million bond for the garages. This particular total of $488.9 million is the total amount upon which we would apply the index, which at this point in time is 3.9% for the current index, to get the additional spending of $19 million. So the total amount on line 24 for fiscal '26 will be $508 million. Listed below for illustration purposes only is the current general fund as approved last year, fiscal '25, increased it by 4%. As you recall, the mayor has asked the operating divisions to come in at 3%, but there is that benefit increase of 10% that we have to account for. So the approximate increase, if everybody does come in at 3%, will be about 4%. That's an additional $13.6 million. As you recall, the mayor indicated he would like to put SURF, which is our Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, into the budget, into the operating budget, and not fund it with supplementals or escrows. So the total amount for the general fund appropriation would be approximately $359.4 million. For the purposes of this illustration, I simply listed the revenues and appropriations of the enterprise funds, special revenue funds, which included the grants, and the bond resolution to the extent we're limiting ourselves to a $25 million bond resolution, set of resolutions for the general fund. The total, as you can see, is above $500 million, which is less than the current spending cap. Are there any questions before we go to the next exhibit? Thank you. This particular example for resolution 25-1-
We all thought this was one page.
We only have one page over here.
We only have one, I'm sorry.
Whatever the next one is. Did you guys get the second page?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, there's only two, sorry.
I told him not to pass them out of there.
So this particular exhibit entitled R-25121 example begins with property tax amounts. And as we learned the last meeting we had on this topic, it's the, for this purpose would be the 2024 total municipal tax effort, which is included on the reports we get from the Department of Revenue. This is where we increase the tax levy, the current levy, by the index. This would give us $10.2 million. New growth. The reason why new growth is included is there's a delay between the levy that we're using and the budget year that we're going to enter into. I've seen this, I'm a Woben, Massachusetts resident, or was, and every single calculation I saw that had a tax cap in Massachusetts has a new growth amount. So you don't lose that value. It's just that there's a delay in the, the one-year delay. That's the reason why we're suggesting to add it in. So total revenues with this particular method is $273 million. We added, I'm hoping I didn't make a mistake here, but the revenues are the $92.7 million. These are all on page 18 of the adopted budget. Enterprise funds, there might be a difference in the list here, but there's revenues from enterprise funds, special revenue funds, including the grants, fund balance to reduce the tax rate. As you know, annually, we, the mayor respectfully requests an amount of surplus against the tax rate. It's important to put that in here because this is what would happen if we put $6 million against the tax rate next year. So that's the revenue side. Looking at the general fund side or the appropriation side, same calculation as you had just seen, $340.7 million multiplied by the 4% plus the SURF, looking at general fund appropriations of $359 million. And then adding the enterprise funds, school special revenue, city special revenue, those are in the budget. Also covered by the property tax effort are things like the county tax bill, veterans credits, overlay. And the city TIF districts through the tax commitment verification that is sent to us, that's where the appropriations of the revenues from the TIF districts go into the funds of the TIF district. So the total would be $492 million. The amount over, so the amount over possible appropriations minus estimated revenues is $11.7. Thinking about this particular method is we're applying the index to a percentage of the general fund. So you're not going to get as much revenue from that index as you did when you applied the index to the entire budget. That's the immediate thought that I had with regard to this index. And that's, a couple of points, the overlay, the overlay is an amount that's raised in taxes to pay for folks that come in for abatements. If you didn't have the overlay, you'd be, you'd have to raise revenue to pay them. And the DRA requires that we have an overlay, and we, this is the lowest overlay request we've had in a long time. We have a pretty healthy balance of $11 million. The veterans credits, it's when, they're going to get the credit on their bills, so you have to account for that particular expense. And the county tax bill, that's part of the tax rate, and it's a separate tax rate on the bill. So we have to make sure. Now, it wasn't that we were doing anything wrong with the current methodology. It was that we were essentially paying for, paying for these things through the tax rate setting process. So that's why there is no, matter of fact, I think it's prohibited to have a, the county tax in the budget, overlay in the budget, and other items in the budget such as veterans credits. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to respond. Thank you.
I'm going to let the mayor weigh in. Since he just got here, I'll give him a few minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Alderman, Cleo and I were just at the Ward III meeting, which was, I'd say, well-attended and a lot of questions and the like. So we were a little late. But I thought I'd stop by briefly to give you at least one perspective on it. We've discussed how we got here, that there was a lawsuit to challenge a change pertaining to the sewer user charge inclusion or exclusion from the budget, or from the, from the current budget cap calculation. And that lawsuit resulted in an invalidation of the entire cap. Now, again, the city never asked for that, but the court did that on its own volition. That was, that was affirmed by the New Hampshire Supreme Court on an appeal. So then the legislature got in the act and passed a law saying that all, in 2021, saying that all of the language in any existing, in charter language only, charter language in any existing cap was grandfathered, but also included a lot of requirements in terms of future tax caps. So ours was grandfathered, but the only charter language really is that the expenditures are controlled, and that's why we've run into the, kind of, a little bit of the nonsense that we have. That a lot of things are expenditures that aren't directly, don't have a direct bearing on the actual, the city tax rate. In any event, so Alderman Clemmons and I got together. He said, well, I think we should propose a tax cap. Sounds good to me. So, thank you, Ben, and as a substitute. Now, the one thing I wanted to mention, and that's all the, kind of, the background that you've heard before, the one thing I wanted to mention is that you've raised some questions about some of the language in the cap. I think if you talk with Attorney Bolden, he will tell you that he's trying to conform to a statute which is, I'm saying, unnecessary, you know, is complicated, complex, more complex than it needs to be. I think if it were up to me, I would just say, whatever any community wants to pass, they can have it. I mean, you know, but they impose a lot of different requirements. There can be an exclusion for debt on the revenue side. There can be another exclusion on the, on the expenditure side. There can be, there can be, there needs to be an override, et cetera, et cetera. So he's trying to make this consistent, they might say, pass muster under state law. You look at some of these other caps, Manchester. That was passed before the grandfather legislation. So it probably, according to what the legal department tells me, it probably would not qualify under current statutes. But it was grandfathered along with ours. The thing, the difference there is that they had pages of definitions and of procedures and all that in, in the charter. We didn't have that. So all we got grandfathered is the very limited language that exists. Their whole, all of their pages were grandfathered. So were they to start all over again, they would need to have something like Attorney Bolden has written, I believe. So that is, I think, a part of the difficulty in trying to understand what's been written, that he's trying to write this in a way that's consistent with state law and that can actually conform with a statute that I don't think any other community has conformed with. I don't think any, has any cap passed since '21. And even if it did, it might not conform. No one's challenged it, though. Now, that was a question to Attorney Bolden.
I know no challenges since 2021.
Do you think, have any caps passed since '21, new ones?
I think they, I think there may be some.
But the better-known ones were there already, Manchester, for example. And it was grandfathered in '21. Anyway, that's my perspective on my two cents. I don't have a vote. So if anybody has any questions for me, which you may not, I'm here for the moment.
Alderman Sullivan.
I have a question for CFO Griffin. Sorry, Mayor Donchus.
You're letting me off the hook, I appreciate it.
So when I look at the two exhibits side by side, given that when you had prepared these, we hadn't changed the amendment, so, I mean, we hadn't amended it, so we're still using 3.9%. So if I go bottom line to bottom line, current situation gets us to a total amount of $500 million. Under the proposed tax cap, it would get us to $492 million. So that's, it's less. But am I looking at the right, am I, I, I don't, I don't think this is an apples-to-apples comparison because I look at the enterprise fund and it matches what the, sorry, not the enterprise fund. The general fund appropriation under your example is $359 million and change. And under the current spending cap, it would be $359 million and change. So I look at, I'm just, I'm just trying to look at what's different, not what's better, just what's different between the two. And so far, I do see total appropriations are less by about $8 million, but the general fund, which determines the tax rate, or what people pay, is the same. Am I correct?
It is, it is an oranges-and-apples comparison. If you look at the current system, it does have a significant amount of capital, projects, bonding. It's, the left-hand side has been developed over several years because there's a base associated with it. On the right-hand side, it's multiplying an index by the tax effort every year. It doesn't start with, to the extent the tax effort goes up, it will be up, but it's not, it's not similar to on the left-hand side. Now, the observation that the total appropriations are $492 on the most recent exhibit that we went over, and $500, there's things in the $492 that aren't in the $500. As I mentioned, we do not budget for county tax. We do not budget for overlay. We don't, we don't budget for the city TIF district. So there's, if you take those out, and you take the $25 million out from the bonding, and you're going to get closer. And the final point on the general fund appropriations equaling, I did that on purpose because I didn't want to use a, an exhibit from February 10th to the same exhibit today, and then you'd be saying, well, how come, you would, and I would, how come the general fund appropriations aren't equal?
Alderman Sullivan.
So a follow-up to that is, but under the proposed resolution, they can be the same. They can, they can mirror each other because of...
They can be.
Yeah, so it's, okay.
But the reality is, the first one, we've, we've reviewed together on the February 10th, that we're, we're under the cap.
Yep.
Now, looking at a situation where the revenues are less than the appropriations.
Okay, I have one more question.
Alderman Sullivan.
Under the proposed resolution, when we come up with what the, what the amount allowable is under the cap, it is the same, is it the same calculation that we use the inflation factor off of? Meaning, we take the general fund, enterprise funds, special revenue funds, we take all of that together, and then we multiply it by the inflation factor? That is the same in both, same for the both, both Exhibit A and Exhibit B?
That's the biggest difference, that they're not the same. As I indicated, when we looked at the example for fiscal, for 25-121, you're only multiplying the index by, I'm going to use this word, a fraction of the budget, which is the property tax effort, the 261. So we're looking at the increase by the index of $10,215 on the revenue side, whereas on the current side, we're multiplying the entire $488 million by the index.
Okay, so we're...
So we're literally multiplying the entire budget by the index, which is the spending cap.
Right. So maybe to make it, to refine it even further, in, with the proposed resolution, we are only, we're adding up lines two, three, and four, as opposed to two, three, and four on the other side, as opposed to, we are not adding up lines six through 10, and then multiplying by 3.9.
Correct.
All set, Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, it's, it is a little confusing looking at, at the examples you provided. But just for clarification for everyone, assuming the best scenario with a timeline involved, if this becomes a charter question, the first time it would be applied would be the FY '27 budget, not the FY '26 budget. So I, I guess the thing that concerns me the most is, what are the pluses and minuses in changing from the way we're doing it now versus this new procedure? And the other point I wanted to make is, I've been following Manchester's taxes for probably the last 10 years, anyway. And I would say at least eight out of the last 10, they've overridden the cap. So I don't know how theirs is structured, but it evidently is not meeting their requirements. So that concerns me a little. So, you know, I, I, what I want to know before comfortable changing the way we're doing it now is finding out how it impacts the overall city budget. Is it going to put us in a position where we're always having to override the tax cap?
Having been here for 15 years now, multiplying the index back in the day with everything was a struggle. Now multiplying an index on a portion of the revenue associated with providing services for the city, I think that would be very difficult. So if you, for example, if you multiply 3.9% by $456 million, you're going to get a bigger number than 3.9% times $261 million. And even though I've set this up where you can just exclude, like, there's no base on the, on the, on the, this particular resolution. So you're not worried about the base, other than the taxes. And the, the taxes, I haven't been that bad. The taxes have been $237, $244, $252, $261. And you've looked at the tax rates, two years ago, we were less than 1% increase. This year was a little bit more challenging. So although people have been frustrated to some degree with adding everything in the budget, it actually complies with New Hampshire municipal budget law. And as Corporations Council Bolden was explaining, there's no, even the most recent law doesn't allow you to just take these things out. You have to affirmatively take them out. Not sure exactly how the, as Alderman said, you know, if we get a $10 grant in and we're at the cap, can we, can we get it in? And I think the answer is you can. You just have to affirmatively allow that to happen. Definitely a different approach. But if you, the cost of doing business is the cost of doing business. Everybody's trying their hardest, everybody's negotiating in good faith. It's, it's hard to see how this new proposal would help you do anything other than maybe do some overrides every year. And I don't see it translating, especially what's happening. Alderman Sullivan had a good question. The reason why the 4.6 exceeds the 3.9 is, in that index is a 7% inflation. Remember that two years ago, 7%. That's going to come out, and it's going to be likely not 4.6, it's going to be like 3.4. And I think the objective is to get it heading towards 2%. So, and what happens to the bargaining units, they're kind of, they were lower a year, a few years ago, and now they're catching up, and it's like two ships passing in the night. It's not easy to line up the bargaining unit, good faith, negotiations, and your approvals of the cost items with the realities of a modified cap as is presented here.
Alderman Dowd.
Well, with that explanation, I still don't feel comfortable knowing what this is going to do to us. And the other thing that doesn't make me comfortable is, under the current administration in Washington, I don't think we know where the hell the CPI is going to go. Right now, everybody's calling, it's going to go for, instead of inflation, it's going to go into a recession. Well, how does that impact the CPI? And, you know, are we going to get to a point where, I mean, I pretty much trust this board to support our primary services, police, fire, and DPW. But it could, in the future, get to a point where we would be slashing public safety to meet a number. That bothers me. So I'm not comfortable yet with making a change unless I hear more.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. This tax cap is the, is the more fiscally conservative approach. There's no doubt about it. And what it does is, yes, would we have to override the cap? Probably. But what it makes us do is sharpen our pencils. So whether we want to go through that, and whether we think that that's a good thing or not, that's the reality of what this proposal does. You know, I've been through tough budgets here, I've been through when the... You know, I've been through tough budgets here, I've been through when the spending cap was extremely tight, and you have to make really tough choices. I don't necessarily think that it's a bad thing to do that, but this is, this is the, this is the conservative approach. So if you, if you agree with that, you would support the tax cap, and that, I mean, the numbers bear it out right here.
Anything else, Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I know I said last question, but I did math over here. So just going back to what I had asked before, if, if we use the inflation factor 3.9%, and if we were to take the tax revenues, I'm going on the R, R, the 121 example. The total tax revenues are 273,346,894. If we increased that by the 3.9%, that would allow us, that's, that's 10,660,052.
That's already included in that number.
I'm sorry, can you, one more time?
You look at line three.
Yeah?
The index has already been added in. So of the 273 and change, it's made up of the previous tax levy of 261,9. Then you get the increase of 10 million some by the index, and the estimated new growth of almost 1.2 million. So that, you've already got the inflation factor in the 273,346,000.
So I just keep coming back to lines, it's, it's really lines 14, 15, 16, and 17, because in this example, the general fund appropriations are just about the same under the proposed resolution and the spending cap calculation.
And they're 11 million over.
Appropriations, appropriations can be whatever you want them to be, as long as they stay under the budget limitation. So in the, in the example of the current charter, if you look down where it says at line 24, maximum appropriations allowed, you get 508 million and change. That should be compared with the number on line 11 on the other page, that's 480,773,000 and change. Those, those, one is, the 480 million is the budget limitation under the proposal, the 508 million is the budget limitation under the current charter.
I see that. But the general fund, which determines the tax rate, is.
That's not what determines the tax rate. The amount to be raised in taxes is what determines the tax rate.
Okay, I need to sit with this longer.
Alderman Clemmons, and then Alderman Dowd.
Thank you, Madam President. So, so the, your only increase, so the R25121 example, your, if you look down at the bottom on line 27, it's using the same figure so that it compares to the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. And you can see that it's 11,786,079 over what the tax cap would allow, meaning we would have to cut 11,786,079 from the proposed budget in order for it to be under the tax cap. That's, that's what this is saying. So, and that, and that's why I was saying, like, this is a conservative approach, that you're going to look at every single dollar when it comes in, because you're going to want it to get as close to that 480 number to satisfy the cap. And would that mean that it would be an override? Maybe, but if not, then you'd have to cut almost 12 million dollars out of the proposed budget.
Okay, I understand. Thank you for that explanation, I appreciate that.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, it is, in all the budgets that we've done, I don't see where we could cut 12 million without impacting city services, police, fire, and education, and there's just no way. We never find that much in excess. We can find some things, but 12 million? I don't think so. First thing we'd have to do is eliminate that 6 million from the taxes going into SURF. We would have to go back to using excess revenue at the end of the year, because it would kill us. And, of course, again, we're also looking at a number that we haven't even gone through the budget yet, so we're not looking at a real number yet. But, I, it, just in my mind, I'm thinking if we went to this tax cap, that we're going to have to modify the way we do things over time. So, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that maybe this is not the time to do this move. We ought to wait and see what happens, particularly in the next two years, with what's going on at the federal and state levels, because we could get killed. And, and I don't think anybody in Nashville wants us to eliminate police officers, firemen, and, and teachers, and, you know, all we keep getting from the state is reducing the amount of money they're sending down, and, you know, and you would end up having to override to keep the city in the current shape it's in, or sacrifice a whole bunch of things we don't want to sacrifice.
Alderman Gavilla.
Thank you, Madam President. So, to go off of what was just said, I do agree, but, I mean, as my colleague at large, who's serving as clerk tonight, knows, up at the State House, there's always a reason to keep pushing down the road things like Group Two Retirement, or anything like that. Along those lines, there's always something bigger. When would be the good time to do this? Looking at the examples we have here, it, it does appear that the proposal is the more conservative approach, but with this approach and how it is written, brings the concerns to mind over the overrides. And I brought this up at the initial meeting we had on this, was that we can override as many times as we want. So, sure, we could say we have to cut by 11.7, but if we just keep overriding, we then turn into just about every town in Massachusetts that overrides their tax cap 1,000 times, and the taxes go up. So, with this approach, although I do feel it is fiscally responsible, sticking to it is, I mean, it's not, not very enforceable. It's pretty easy to override. I would like to see still a limitation to how many times in a fiscal year we could override. I'll bring that motion up later, but I, I don't know. It, I see where we're getting at, and I think the number on the sheet makes sense, and it looks good, and I would love for it to happen, but at least under what we have now, it's a hard cap that we can only override one time. So, that's kind of where I'm standing at now. It just seems a little, a little squishy for me.
Can I, because I think there's a basic misunderstanding. You can't override the present cap at all. There are a couple categories of things that can be excluded.
Yes.
One of them can only be excluded once per year. The other one, there's no such limitation.
Understood, thank you.
Alderman Cleese, and then Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President, and I apologize if this was brought up before I, I came in. I have two questions. The first is to the sheet, this is R25121 example, and this might be for Attorney Bolton, and Attorney Bolton, I'm not questioning the, the legislation, honestly, I'm not, I'm more trying to educate myself. Why would we put the county tax bill in this? Is that part of the, what this, what the state did when they wrote it, saying that we had to, no?
We don't have to include that in our calculation. It's, I believe, it's on this just to show you these other things that we have to raise, but are not accounted for actually in the proposed charter amendment, but we know we have to pay these. These get figured by the DRA when they calculate our tax rate. We're not supposed to include them in our budget. The DRA is going to put them in, whether we do or not. Some of this gets shown separately. The county tax bill gets shown separately on the tax bill. You, you can see it, it says municipal, school, county, and statewide education, property tax. Those things, you know, are included in what the taxpayers pay. We have virtually no say in that. To try and include that in our, in our calculation, it's fine here for illustration, using what was last year for the county taxes, but our share of the taxes can vary from year to year, and what the county budgets varies from year to year. And we've got no real control over either of those, which is why I left it out of the change, trying to, trying to develop either numbers that we can easily get from somewhere, like the prior year's tax levy and the inflation factor, or numbers that are within our control that we can estimate, and not have to depend on something coming from the outside. So, it's here for illustration, using numbers, I believe, from the prior year, but, as I say, it's not part of the proposed charter amendment.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, and, and thank you for that explanation, I truly appreciate it, because I, I agree, having been a state rep and, and working on the county budget, even the six years that I was there, it, it changed from year to year. Sometimes we were taking money to try to reduce it, and I know these next two years are going to be really rough up there, so. The other question that I had, and I think this may have been addressed as I was walking in the door, Mr. Griffin, the, currently, we have to put grants, or, as I always refer to it, and I, I think you, you made a, a comment about it being, that it didn't affect the, the taxes, so like grants and non, non-tax type money. That's in the, the first sheet, the one that says FY26 proposed budget. Is that in the R25121 example? Do we still have to put that in, because it's still an appropriation, correct? But it's not a tax impact?
Correct. Those grants are in school special revenue funds, line eight, and city special revenue funds, line nine, so they're in there. There's the revenue, and they're the same appropriations below, so you're absolutely correct. No impact on the taxes.
May I?
Yes.
Okay. So, technically, what you're saying, it's a wash, it's a tax revenue and an appropriation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
So I, I, I think one of my questions was just, was just answered, the, the, under the proposal, the, the budget limit is increased by projected other revenues, which includes grants and gifts, and, and those are, those are in, in your example, those are labeled the city special revenue funds, is that?
Alderman Jettie, city school, city and school special revenue funds are grants, where the revenue is equally expenses. And also, special revenue funds, I'm going to call out the, the school districts, $5 million, the, the food, the food services for the school, children, and staff.
Title one.
$5 million in, $5 million out, some local revenue, but those, you can't have a special revenue fund where the appropriations exceed the revenue, so they're a wash. The difference between this proposal is, there's no base, there's no, like, if there was 30 million grants last year, and none this year, which could happen, no impact on this calculation, because you're not going to get the grant, and you're not going to have to spend the grant.
Okay, but, but as I understand the proposed legislation, you know, projected other revenues means estimated revenues to be received during the coming fiscal year. So we have to guess or estimate what we're going to be getting, whether we get it or not, I guess is besides the point, but we estimate what we're going to get, and we include that in the calculation, don't we?
That's correct, that's exactly what we do every year. We take our best estimate of hydroelectric fees, best estimate of building permits, best estimate of motor vehicle revenue. It's just in the current spending cap calculation, our objective is to be very, you've heard this before, very conservative on revenues, so we're literally creating surplus. This particular, the 92 million, that's the highest I've ever seen it in the city, and that's because we've enjoyed increases from the state to adequacy aid, and I'm not sure that's going to continue, and it could very well decrease. I mean, we had some decreases in the past, so. But Alderman Jettie, your question is a good one, they're all estimated revenues, there's no guarantees for the most part.
But whatever they, whatever the estimates are, that, that's included in your example here, correct?
Correct.
And if I could ask another, since you're here, CFO Griffin, you're during, during the last, at the last meeting, Attorney Bolton told us that, under the definition of prior year's property tax levy means the dollar amount of the total municipal tax effort as shown on the tax rate breakdown Nashua, prepared by the DRA for the preceding year. And, and he told us that that's, that is on a document that is identified here, and I, and I believe him when he tells me that, but I, I tried to find it, you know, I went to the DRA and I, you know, as a last resort, I went to Dr. Google, and I could not, nobody could give me that, that number, nobody could tell me where it was, or where it's a copy of it. The, the, the DRA does have a, a schedule of municipal tax rates, and there's, there's a number labeled total commitment, which seems to be, you know, a, a function of, you know, the, the city's value, property valuation, and I'm assuming subtracting out, you know, tax credits and, you know, non- I guess, you know, properties that aren't taxed or whatever. But, and then multiplied by the total tax rate, and they come up with total commitment. Is that the same thing as the total municipal tax effort?
So Alderman Jettie, I've got multiple copies here. I would have thought that everybody had a copy, but that's okay. The most pronounced number that Attorney Bolton found right at the top of the schedule is the effort. It's the easiest thing to see. It totals all of the efforts of municipality, county, local education, and state education. It's a great number. It's very pronounced. It's side by side to our tax rate. So that's the number the Corporation Council Board selected. Below that, it's a four-page document. I'm going to give it to you tonight. They send it to us when the Director of Municipal and Property Division signed this on December 6th of 2024. So they send it to us.
Could you share that with us?
Absolutely. Would you like it, you want to walk it in now? I mean, we can pass these around.
If there are enough copies for all of us, sure.
Yeah, there's two pages.
Thank you. What I found is by asking a tax collector, and I had it within 20 minutes.
I think at the last meeting, the tax collector offered to provide it to us, but I never got one.
I have Alderman Tebow next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think when Director Cummings went over this year's budget, and I know it was, you know, an example and not actually this year's budget, I begged the press not to put anything in there that that was the budget. Tonight, I want the press to put in that Mayor Donches is going with a more conservative approach to the budget. Because that would probably shock a lot of people. You know, I like the more conservative approach. I think, you know, yeah, 11,000 or 11 million here, or almost 12 million that we'd have to find. Let's find it. And I still think if we're going to go over the cap, which we have some ability to, 10, still a super majority, I don't know if that would pass tonight because we're missing three aldermen. So again, it's not always going to be that easy to override the cap. And this year, we went, we lengthened it to over almost 45 million extra in the spending cap. If we really had to go, we're only going over 12 million here. Not that I want to go over the cap, but it's still less than what we bargained for this year. So I will support this when we vote on it eventually. Because I think it's the better way to go. And it makes us, it kind of makes us look at things and try to, try to get that budget down. Where I think now it's not as, like Alderman Clemens said, fiscally responsible, I guess.
Alderman Clemens?
Yeah, so following up on what Alderman Cleese had brought up. So I want to go back to the general fund appropriations line on the R 25121 example. Because if what, I understand that in appropriations, enterprise funds, school funds, city special revenue funds, the veterans credits overlay, city TIF districts, all of that are things that are controlled by the city. But if I back out the county tax bill out of there, which it sounds like, from what Attorney Bolton said, we would not have to include that under our calculation. Then we're actually about 2.2 million under the appropriations under the total revenues on line 11. Is that a fair reading?
Good question. I'd like to partner with Attorney Bolton and ask him, if we took the 13, 9 out, would we have to reduce line 2 by a like amount?
No.
Okay.
I mean, these things are really, like the veterans credit is actually a subtraction, not an addition.
Anyway, in what is before you, those things are not included.
None of them.
Right.
So really, then, we'd be far, far under the, because we'd only be at 359 million?
I mean, this whole section about appropriations is just what you might want to do in the budget this year. Maybe you want to do that, maybe you want to do something more and would require an override. Maybe you'd want to do something less. But it was an effort to put something in for appropriations under the new one and under the old one and see where it came out.
No, I understand that. But if we're not, but in order to, if we're not counting, if we're not counting the county tax bill in here, then then we would be under that total revenues line 11. We're not counting any of it, then we'd be way low.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's in any of the things that add up to get to line 11. It's not a revenue.
No, it's an appropriation.
It's not an appropriation. It is categorically not an appropriation. We do not, we collect it for the state and send it back, and it goes to the county. But it's not ours to spend. We don't appropriate it. It's something that, it's something that the DRA adds in, and you see it separately on your tax bill.
Right.
Your share of it. So it's nothing this board can control. And I don't really think you ought to be indicating that you're responsible for it.
No, I agree with you. But I do have another question on those lines that are in here. We do appropriate veterans credits.
No, you don't.
No.
Those are revenues that you never get. So you don't spend them, other than you just never get them.
So I guess I would like this redone, then, this example. Because, and maybe the two, maybe Mr. Griffin and Attorney Bolton can get together. Because the, if we're not including, and I understand from Mr. Griffin why he would put all of those things in as appropriations because they're calculations that you have to, I understand where you, I can't describe it in words right now, but.
You might as well put in SWEPS, too, if you're going to put those in. Statewide education property tax, which is the end of tax bill. The city never gets that money.
So what I'm trying.
From other money the state would give us.
So what I'm trying to get at is, I think that I'm going to retract what I said earlier. Because if we're not including these things as appropriations, then we are far below, we are far below what the total revenue versus the general fund appropriation line 17. That delta is huge. So I think we need some clarification. Because I get it, I don't think it's that. I think there's something else in there that we need to understand.
I have Alderman Dowd next.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First one is, we're talking about a tax cap. When the tax rate is set, it's set by Concord with other things involved. So that's not what we're capping. We're capping what number? We're capping a number below that, that goes up to Concord. Not what the final tax rate is, because we have no control over that. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, as Attorney Bolton's indicated several times, we can't put in a tax cap. We don't have control of the calculation process. So Attorney Bolton has modified some items.
So technically, we're still looking at a spending cap, calling it a different name under a different way we're doing it? So.
The state statutes determine interchangeably.
The other thing is that I think tonight, the only thing that we can do in this meeting is come up with any additional amendments to the resolution because we're going to have to have another public hearing. So we can't vote on this tonight. All we can do is see if there are any other changes we want to this legislation before it goes to another public hearing. The one thing that I would never, ever support is limiting an override to one a year. And I'll tell you why. We're going through the year, and we do the one override, fat, dumb, and happy. And then that one year, the Penechuk roof collapsed. How the hell do we pay for it? Can we take money out of the cash that the city has without overriding?
You need an overriding.
So what do we do? Close a school for a year? How do we handle emergency? So there's no way I would ever support limiting it to one override. That's tying our hands and future board's hands that you just can't do.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Listening to the exchange here about what gets included under appropriations and what doesn't, I feel that perhaps that should be written into the resolution. Because then we're just going to end up where we are now. As far as, if you look at past budget calculations, grants weren't factored in, and now they are. And that would be my advice is, you know, for whatever it's worth, that we should codify that. So everybody is reading off the same resolution, and there's no confusion in the future. The other piece that, and I guess it's just semantics, but, you know, the county amount that we collect is factored into that 261 million. You know, it said that, you know, we don't have to account for it, but we do. Because if we didn't have to pay it, then we wouldn't have to raise the money for it. So I would, I mean, I would, we have to, out of the amount that we raised, we have to send it back to the county. Because then we're down $14 million about. So I would, again, I would just make crystal clear what it is we take into account and what we don't, what we account, what gets labeled as far as what an appropriation and isn't. So I think that there's a little bit more work that needs to go into this.
Tell me what you want for an amendment, I'll write it down.
Well, I think that we should amend what we account for appropriations. And I think it should be, let's just say, let's, what we should take out are the veterans credits and the city TIF district. I think that those two should be eliminated from that. I know it's a sample, but I would just want to make sure that we put that in the resolution so we only count what we should count.
Well, that's actual spending, that's actual expenditure. I don't know how you can call it not an appropriation.
I understand that, but if it's something that you had said that we don't need to count, there was just some disagreement there. I just, I want to make sure that we're doing, that we're all. What's that?
That's an expenditure. It has to be appropriated in order to be spent.
Then we're right back where we started, and we're 11, 7 over the spending cap, or the cap. And we need to find 11 million.
No, we're not. The county tax is not an appropriation.
Then we should take it out. Then we should take it out.
It's fine to take it out of this example. I don't know how to take it out of the resolution by what you're saying.
Is it in the resolution?
It's not in the resolution at all. You seem to think it is, but it's not.
Well, I just used it because it's sitting there right in front of me.
You all said Alderman Sullivan?
Yeah.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things that I do like about the tax cap versus a spending cap, and while those terms are interchangeable, and they're interchangeable in the legislation that was brought up through the state. And I know it was said here, well, if we do this, and isn't this just a glorified spending cap? But the one thing that we're doing is we're telling our residents, we are going to limit how much of a tax we're going to put on you. And so, and so it's something they can almost kind of feel like they can budget. We have no authority over the county tax bill. And as I stated, when I was up there, there were times when that bill went up high. There were times when they took money from their, the county can only save or have in their accounts X amount of dollars. When it reaches a certain amount of money, of revenue that they have there, they have to, I don't want to say spend it down, but they have to use it, they have to do that. So at one year of legislation, they kind of gave it back, and we had a zero increase in the county tax. Didn't mean that there was no county tax, there was still county tax, but there was a zero increase. I think this year, there was a very large county increase because they found that they had deficit, and they had this spending, and so on. So we never know what they're going to do. I think anytime that we're looking at this, we have to be honest with our taxpayers and say, the 3.9 or 4, whatever it is that the CPI is going to be, we need to say to them, we are keeping our budget, the city budget, the money that we're spending to maintain the city, to pay the employees, and so on, to this CPIU or whichever one that, you know, we decide on. Obviously, the CPIU is what we have on the table at the moment. I think that's important to say to them. I think that's very transparent. They can see where all those numbers come to and so on. To say that we would, and again, Attorney Bolton has pointed to us that the county is not in the legislation. And I appreciate that we put this in this example so we could kind of see how everything kind of adds up. But I think it's less than genuine when we're looking at this because we really are 2.2 million dollars below the budget limitation when I pull it out. And that's kind of why I brought it up. I was like, why are we putting the county tax bill in our, in the monies that we promised us? So I think we need to be very clear to the taxpayers that even though we say we're going to keep ourselves to 3.9 or 4%, the tax book might increase slightly than that because of these additional things that the state, the county, put on us. And when we go forward, we need to be honest with that. And the spending cap does that as well. So even though we have a spending cap and so on. So while yes, those terms are interchangeable, I personally think the tax cap is more transparent. I think that the tax cap is more transparent and it does, as it was pointed out, it does force us that if we do need to go over, whoever the, the, that board is at the time, they have to account for each and every item. And, and I, and I noticed that there was a comment about Massachusetts communities where nothing, more, more or less, nothing better than Massachusetts communities that continue to override. But if you look, New Hampshire communities, many New Hampshire communities, including Manchester and so on, have done a lot of overrides too. So if we have to override, it does not make us Massachusetts. So I just want to make sure we get that very clear out there. So, um, thank you.
Madam President, I have to correct something. I may have stated previously, previously, I think I said you can't take action on this tonight. Actually, you can't pass it tonight. You could indefinitely postpone it if you want.
Thank you. Alderman Senate and then Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just had a clarifying question through you to CFO Griffin because in the past hour and a half, I feel like I've heard it posited both ways. Could you just clarify for me? The municipal tax effort that we're looking at on the example in front of us, the 261.9 million, is or is not the county tax bill portion of the 13.9 included in that?
So I, I don't have the information I passed out pursuant to Alderman Jettie's questions, but you can look on that.
You can see it's the first column in the first section.
Do you want me to give this back to you?
It's a municipal, I got mine here, I could answer my own question, I'm sorry. And that all adds up to the 261.
It is, okay. Thank you.
So the next.
So a thing.
All right. If I may, one more.
Yes.
My second point is more just thinking aloud, back to Alderman Sullivan's point of codifying what we'd like to in here through you to Attorney Bolton. And please feel free to tell me no because I understand what a lift this could be. And, and it's a silly question, but we have a, a number of definitions in here. In contemplating all that and what is and isn't in the collective budget, is it possible to sort of define budget in here in terms of what appropriations are part of that?
All appropriations.
All appropriation. May, maybe that, maybe that sort of definition, while redundant, might be helpful in this. I'm, I'm not sure.
I could, I could add something of that sort.
Thanks.
All set, Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Just to play devil's advocate, building off that, just in the summary, it said, "This amendment would limit the annual budget and other appropriations such that the amount to be raised from municipal property taxes will increase on and on and on." I'm just concerned if we don't define other appropriations, my question to you is, does that open this up to interpretation that could jeopardize this? If we don't, if we don't specify what those other appropriations are, could that open this up?
I, I think it's pretty clear under state law what an appropriation is. It's an authorization by the legislative body to spend money. That's an appropriation. I can write that in there. Most of those appropriations in any given year are in the budget. There are supplemental and special appropriations through the course of the year.
All set, Alderman Sullivan?
Yes, I am all set.
Okay. Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to comment on what was said earlier by the Ward Three Alderman. And, and I guess express my opinion that the samples that were prepared for us tonight and the attempt to try to articulate a very complex and fundamental change to how we're basically establishing our, our, our financial management policy for the city, those are difficult and this conversation is necessary. This is the exploration that we, we need to be having while we're doing this as part of our role, which maybe wasn't as accessible when we had just the public comment. And the public comment was largely just directed without, without necessarily review or the opportunity to fully explore this. So this isn't an easy endeavor. I think the, the samples were well intentioned and, and through the conversation that we're having, we're seeing that maybe some interpretations aren't clear. And, and that's the point. This is a major undertaking and we do have to review this and make sure that we're, we're approaching it in a, in a reasonable manner and doing our due diligence. That being said, I, I think the underlying concept here is that we're intentionally working to amend and reform a system that many of us feel to be broken and much public comment has said is, is difficult to understand, labyrinthine and, you know, a matter of much debate. The spending cap that we have right now is not perfect at all. And an effort to try to remake a more intentional policy to replace it, I think is, is necessary and important. I, I do note that this is, whatever we do refer forward to public comment and then to the state and then back for approval, is intended to go before voters. So it is important for us to hammer this out as much as possible ahead of time so that we're able to present that final opportunity. I am conscious of the fact that we, you know, this isn't necessarily, and I think overdue, attempt at visiting this. And the, the time is not ideal because of the way that things could go upstream, whether it's at the state or at the federal government. There's never going to be an ideal time to do this. I think the point was made earlier in this meeting that based on the sample, this was a more fiscally conservative approach. I don't think fiscally conservative just means sliding to scale on spending more or less money. I understand the concept of conservatism, but there have been countless examples in my time as Alderman where spending less money cost us more money. And I think that was something that Alderman Dowd had referred to earlier is that if we hamstring ourselves and we make sure that we don't have enough ability to respond, then that's not making a better policy. That's just limiting ourselves as Aldermen and letting us throw up our hands and tell our constituents, well, we decided we had a rule, so we weren't going to follow it. So I don't think necessarily standing on one particular point or other is going to see us through this. The conversation is necessary. I think that when we look at what's fiscally conservative, having the ability to include other forms of income to meet the expenses and to, to navigate the appropriations that we do have to make out of necessity, or necessity, is important. And I don't think that's something that our current spending cap necessarily allows us to do or at least doesn't allow us to do without having to make exemptions or having to really negotiate or, or debate whether or not we're doing it right. I mean, we keep, we keep having people come and tell us they're going to sue us for interpretation of it. So I think the, the effort is necessary. And I, like my colleague from Ward Three, view this as, as close to a tax cap as we can reasonably do, given the reality that we don't actually set the tax rates. It is a budget cap, which is, I think, an important factor. But I also think it allows us to look at the actual revenue and income sources as they are. And in New Hampshire, the reality is at the moment, a lot of that burden gets carried by property owners and, and then passed down through other ways. And I think this is a more holistic approach to that and it recognizes particularly what we've been hearing all this year, that people are struggling with their tax burden. They're worried about whether they're going to be able to continue to own property in Nashua. And I think that's something that all of us don't want to see happen. We don't want to see people losing their, their homes in Nashua, but we don't want that reality to be pitted against whether or not we can pay the fire department. I think this is a necessary discussion and I will still support what I see unfolding, depending on what the amendments that are offered tonight look like.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So now that I see this tax rate breakdown Nashua form, you know, I, I see that the municipal tax rate calculation includes, you know, the municipal tax effort, the local education tax effort and, you know, which we've, you know, which we admit, you know, we, we have responsibility for, you know, certainly the municipal portion, to a lesser degree, the local education portion. But I guess we have final approval over that. But the county and state education, we have no control over that whatsoever, has been pointed out many times this evening. And so I'm wondering, you know, I, again, I welcome Attorney Bolton to, you know, to, to educate me, to straighten me out where I'm, I'm missing the point. But i- if in fact, you know, what, what we've been talking about is trying to find some method to control what we spend here locally, you know, why, why would we include in the, in the definition of budget limit the prior year's property tax levy, which is defined as the total municipal tax effort as shown on the tax rate breakdown Nashua form? Why would we not instead talk about the municipal tax effort and local education tax effort over which we do have control? And and if I'd be, maybe bring it to ask him another question, or would you rather I just wait for that answer?
When we collect it, we have to pay. So if we don't include it, we won't get it. And we, we have to pay it out. It's not an appropriation that you have the right to make, but it will come out of the money that is collected from our citizens, from our taxpayers. So if we don't account for we need to bring that money in, we won't have it when we're required to pay it out. So the appropriations that you do have to make, you know, for police, fire, schools and everything else, you won't have the money for that if you've collected less in taxes and have paid out more in, in these other things that you don't have control.
Okay. So I, I thought what this resolution was doing was determining, you know, how much money we're collecting from the local taxpayers, how much we're collecting. I mean, we figure out what our budget is and we send that to the state.
We are collecting all of this.
And the state determines what the tax rate, you know, the, the tax rate of the municipal effort and the local education effort. And then they add what the tax rate is for the county tax effort and the state education tax effort. We don't, we don't, we don't determine what that is. They tell us what that is.
Exactly.
Okay. So why does it have to be in, in a resolution where we're trying to control how much money, you know, we're asking our taxpayers to pay for the city and the schools?
I don't know how to explain this. We've got to account for the fact that we've got to bring that money in, in order to send it out. And we won't know those numbers early enough in the budget process. Those numbers depend on what the state legislature does with the statewide education property tax that changes every couple of years when the legislature's in session. I'm sure it's going to change this year. We don't know what that change is going to be as we're sitting here now trying to work out the budget. And we don't know what the county tax is going to be. All we know is what it was last year. And you've got to get that, you've got to get that revenue somehow. So.
So, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Jettie.
So we send our information to the state. Am I not right, right about this?
That's exactly right.
And the state figures out, you know, what, what we're going to, what the tax rate's going to be based upon, you know, what, what we say we're going to need for our budget and for the school budget. And then they add on, you know, they tell us what we have to charge for the, for the county and what's, what's going to be charged for the, the statewide education tax. And, and that gets put on our, our bill. We don't determine those numbers. I'm not sure why we, I mean, we have no control over it. Why are we, why are we talking about it? I, I don't know. When you say we have to raise it, well, the state's going to tell us to raise it and we just send the bill out, don't we? People pay it and we send it to the state.
But they're going to say that that's what you're, I could probably rewrite it that way and you can see if you'll like that any better, right?
And, and could I ask my other?
Alderman Jettie.
And so on, on the, on that form, they also talk about the, the tax commitment calculation. And there they've got the total municipal tax effort, which is the sum of the municipal, county, local education and state education taxes. And then they subtract the war service credits. And I, I assume that's the veterans' credit?
Correct.
So, you know, they, they understand we're not collecting that money. So they're subtracting that from the total municipal tax effort to come up with the total property tax commitment. So since we're not collecting that total municipal tax effort, since we're not getting that money, shouldn't we also subtract the veterans' credit in the, and I suppose the, the other exemptions as well, since we're not getting that money? But.
What other exemption are we?
Okay. Whether it's a credit or an exemption, we're not getting the money, right?
No, we are. I don't, I don't know how to calculate those other numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I sort of agree where Alderman Jettie's going in this discussion with Attorney Bolton. I think the legislation that we're trying to pass ought to only apply to the monies that we need to raise locally for our local government. And as found, as far as the county and, and those other fees that have to be added and we have to collect money for it, we just add them to that number that we've capped. But we don't include it in the cap because we have no control over it and we have no idea what the hell the number is. So the legislation ought to be written so that we're only limiting the amount every year that we're spending on local expenses, police, fire, school, and nothing else. And it may need changes to the legislation to do that. So originally, what I was going to say is, there's only three things that we could be doing tonight. And I think we ought to focus on that before it gets too late. You can either try to add an amendment to it. If there are no amendments, or, or we can take time to go over this more and defer to another meeting while all of this is clarified and, and written differently. Or we can indefinitely postpone. Those are the three actions. So any other discussion, I think, is just elongating where we want to go. But again, I think this legislation ought to only involve the monies that we need to raise to support the city of Nashua locally. As far as the county and, and anything else that we have no control over, we add that to the number when we go to set, send the money up to the state.
We don't add that at all. We don't do that.
All right. So when the number comes back with the tax rate, it's going to include those other things in it. But that doesn't have to be part of our cap.
Alderman Clemmons and then Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. So going along
So going along the lines of that, I did some quick math, simple math. The municipal tax effort and the local education tax effort total 229,509,120. If you multiply that by the inflation factor that's on the, that we were using tonight, which is 3.90, you get 8,950,855. So wouldn't it make sense to say that that would be the budget limitation? Because that is 3.9% more than the 229 million that we collected last year in property taxes.
But what about all the other revenues and?
We have, that's my question to you. We have to include those?
Well, if you want to spend the money, you do.
Why can't we add that, just collect that money later, but we only tax the, sorry.
Can we, so here's my question on that. The other things are none, they're not coming from tax revenue, correct? They're coming from like fees and grants and?
That's how we define it.
Right. So can those be separated out from this? Meaning that?
Well, you have to appropriate if you're going to spare. So if that money comes in, you have to make appropriations for it if you want to spend.
But what I'm asking is, could there be two separate calculations, meaning that you have the 3.9% on the property taxes, and then you have the 3.9% on everything else? And they're two different buckets, if you will?
Yes, we can do that. But then the addition of the two would be your budget and appropriation limitation.
I think that would help solve this issue, because I think by doing it that way, you're taking the, you're figuring out the property tax problem, right? And then you're also figuring out the other things that you're limiting, if you will. But you're not conflating the two of them necessarily. You're not co-mingling them together.
How do you want to handle the net new construction value?
You would add that into the, well, actually, yeah, you would actually add that in, right? So it'd be that plus the, right? So it would be?
That plus all the revenue?
It would be the municipal tax effort, the local education tax effort, and the new growth net would be one bucket, and then you'd have everything else under another bucket.
No, you'd have to have the net new construction in the other bucket, not in with the?
Okay.
Wouldn't you? I can do that.
I personally think that that would simplify this in a way that everybody, once it's on paper, everyone is going to be able to understand, because?
It's going to be an even, the limitation is going to be even less. So the issues that?
I don't understand how that's possible, that it could be less, because?
You're applying the inflation factor to a smaller grouping.
You're applying it to 229 million as opposed to 261 million.
So the possibility of you straitjacketing yourselves is even more likely.
Yeah, the, well, the way that I look, but would that be true, though? Because most of our appropriations, I guess I would have to look at how much our tax effort went up each year in the past three or four years. I mean, have they gone up by more than, I'll ask Mr. Griffin, has it gone up by more than 9 million each year?
No.
How much has it gone up, a ballpark figure?
I might have the documents here. Four years ago, I think it was 237. 237, 244, 252, and then this number. Is that 9, probably 9 million a year?
So I don't?
One other thing that's critical here is the local revenue. It was 92 million last year. I haven't changed it this year. It was 66 the year before and 72 the year before that. Local revenue is critical to this, and following your logic or the separation, are you thinking that the 3.9s applied to the revenue, so that's going to go up the same amount as the tax?
Correct.
I'm worried about the revenue. I've been worried since I got here, because the state can do things that don't come through. And that's why you have the volatility. I mean, the state adequacy is going to be like $62 million of the 92. So if they're doing something up in Concord that says we don't have enough money to pay state adequacy, that's a problem. I know they've estimated that it's going up, but I don't know how you, I guess my concern would be if $14 million of the 92 is motor vehicle revenue? Is that going up because the rates are going up, or because there's more demand? Or what happens if there's less demand with car purchases and things like that? So, I mean, you folks ask great questions on hydroelectric revenues, and you find out that there's mechanical issues, that's why we budget very conservatively. But when you're trying to use revenue as you're trying to get to the 480, you've got to make sure the revenues are going to come in. Probably deserves a work session that, you know, we can lay everything out and work together. See how it comes out, and then quantify everything. This current spending cap was quantified. I remember reading the 1993, 1994, what's in it and what isn't. And then I, the ordinances that change it over time, that, I had to be a student of the game to figure out how to do the tax calculation, the spending cap calculation. Thank you.
Okay, I still have a list of people. Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. One question about grants, if you'll indulge me. And I may be using the wrong term, so I apologize. When we do things like pass through grants, in other words, that it has to come through the city in order for another entity to be able to have it, we don't really spend it, we don't make a purchase, but it has to come through us for them to be able to get the grant. Is that considered an appropriation, and does that affect our budget?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. That's a point that I want to make, so that the public does hear that. It's nothing that we've actually spent. It didn't benefit the city. We're just kind of the conduit for that to come through. And that does affect, fucked our budget with the current spending cap. If we don't know ahead of time that these things are coming through. I am concerned about the lack of grants coming through and how this is going to affect our budget, and how we're going to be able to handle these things. So I'm still for doing the tax cap, because I think in the end, it gives us more clarity. I would like our definition, so that the, which is what I was saying before, and I think my, two of my colleagues kind of did the same thing, that we let the taxpayers know that the CPIU that we're using, I understand it brings it down to a lower number, and that could handicap us. I still kind of like that idea. I have concerns when we say we're going to define, fully define the other appropriations, because once we start listing things, the minute something is excluded, such as these grants and so on, then we have all of these issues that we're running around, and then every time we have this new whatever it is that wasn't in the list, we have to do an override every single time something like that happens. And that kind of concerns me. Although I have to admit, having the other as defined by whoever happens to be in power is also exit anxiety ridden too. But remember, a charter is something that always has to go onto the ballot. It's not like something that we can do legislation for. So we have to think long and hard before we do something. I also want to clarify something that keeps going around and around by certain individuals, and that bodies before us did in fact make changes to the legislation, the charter that was put through, to do exclusions, not overrides, but to do exclusions and so on. And I think that was something that was alluded to. But when, what happened by Senator Avard, the legislation that he put through that brought us back to the original charter, erased all of that. So for those people who want to say, you know, this is baloney, what is being talked about, and so on, no, it's not. They erased all the good work that the city had done prior to that and brought it back to that, and then handicapped and tied our hands to the point where we couldn't redo any of that stuff. So that needs to be really clear, and others that are going around and handing things out at all these ward meetings and so on, is because they have an axe to grind. And I want to make that really, really clear in all this. So as we go forward, whichever way we go forward, we need to, whether we define or we don't define, we still need to leave enough wiggle room that future bodies have the ability to accept, or have the ability to potentially redefine something that would accept that type of thing. Again, maybe it means that we have to have multiple overrides, definitely not just one override. And I'll stop talking here, thank you.
Alderman Gavilla.
Madam President, if there's other people who want to speak on this, I'm going to make a motion. So if anybody wants to finish up this conversation, please.
I did have Alderman Thibodeau next.
I just had a question as far as timelines go. When would this need to be completed, polished up, to be put on to the ballot? What is that timeline?
It's a question better asked to the city clerk than how long he needs.
Okay, I was wondering if that was it.
I'll forward your question along to him.
Okay.
He says he needs it by X date. We can back up there. Now, one of the things we don't know, we have to send it up to Concord, and three state officials review it, and there's no time limit on their review. So they could take a week, they could take six months. So it may be impossible to know for sure what we have to do in order to get it on the ballot.
Okay.
I will still ask the question.
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so the way that this resolution is currently written, it looks to me like we are, we're saying that our, you know, the budget limit is the prior year's property tax levy increased by inflation factor, projected other revenues, and net new construction revenue. And we're defining prior year's property tax levy as the total municipal tax effort. And we've discovered that the total municipal tax effort includes the county and state tax efforts, over which we have no control. And so we're applying the inflation factor to that total tax effort. So we're applying the inflation factor to not only the municipal and local education portion, but the county and state education portions, which are another 1.3 million dollars, excuse me, another $32 million. And so you apply the inflation factor, that gives us an extra approximately $1.3 million. So we're getting the benefit of whatever money the state is imposing on our residents for the statewide property tax, and whatever the county is imposing upon them for the county tax. And we're saying, well, we can increase our budget by the inflation factor times whatever those numbers are. So I don't think that was our intention, but maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but I raised that for your consideration.
In a budget of 300 or 400 million dollars, I didn't think 1 million was so significant that I should spend a lot of time worrying about. Now that you pointed it out, I'll write it differently.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Gavilla?
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm going to make a motion to amend, I believe this would fit under Section C, that has to do with the override, and I will move that it can be overridden no more than five times in a fiscal year. And I would like to speak to that, if I can.
Alderman Gavilla?
So obviously, we've talked at length about overrides, and I definitely do see a need for some mechanism, because emergencies do happen. Five, that number just kind of comes to head. You could do one a quarter plus one. We could do one every two and a half months, or five in a row. Take your pick, whatever you think is best management. But I just think this at least gives some sort of guardrail. And I would definitely feel more comfortable with the proposal with some sort of limitation on it. And I think, one, yeah, I could see how that would be too little. I mean, emergencies do happen in the city. We're not going to close a school or any public building. Five is enough where you can use them, and I think there, I really don't see many times where you'd be using more than five in a year. So I'm open for discussion, or if there's another feeling on the board of a different number, I'm more than happy to entertain that as well.
So you've heard the motion, discussion. Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. Forgive me if this is a redundant question. I know a lot of questions have been answered a number of different ways tonight and with our previous meeting. In the case of unanticipated revenues, unanticipated grants, is an override required for those?
It's not an override. It's an exclusion. And that's subsection E.
So that, and that would function different from the proposed amendment to?
Still requires a majority vote, but it's something different than the override of the entire limitation.
It wouldn't be counting against our proposed limit. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thank you, Madam President. In the spirit of compromise, through you to the maker of the motion, would this amendment put you in the camp of then, yeah, you know, I would vote for this, or I would be pro the tax cap? Or do you still have issues with the legislation as it is?
If I can.
Alderman Gavilla?
I would definitely be more in the camp, without a doubt. I would definitely want to see the numbers, as Alderman Clemmons put it, and if we could get it, just like we did as the example of our 25121. If we ran those numbers and the numbers looked comparable or better, I mean, yeah, I think this is definitely a more conservative approach. And I think having these, this guardrail here, at least holds us to more accountability that we just can't, time after time, override. So, yeah, I think it would definitely push me a little closer, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so understanding that this is, this is for subsection C, correct?
I believe that's where it would be best fit.
So, well, it'd be in?
Well, it'd be in D.
All right, be in D.
In D, okay.
But as Alderman Senate had pointed out, this would not affect, we'd have no limitation on the amount of times we could exempt for a grant or an unanticipated revenue. Is that?
That would not be the intention of my motion if it does interfere with it. I would think we would be able to do that as much as we would want.
And that's your interpretation?
He said override. Excludes is something.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, I don't mind this amendment. I think my concern more was with the unanticipated revenue because that's where we run into issues. And I think most of us can agree that, you know, those things that have no bearing on the taxes, you know, can come and go. So I'll support, I think five is a reasonable number. I think it's a number that, you know, we probably, it would be a blue moon the other year if we were to get to that number, but I think it does show the fiscal restraint that we should be showing. So I'll agree with that. I'll go along with this amendment.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'll go along with it as well. It's good compromise, and you're right. If we get to five times in a year, something's wrong. And as long as grants which don't impact taxpayers' money or gifts, somebody wants to give the city $5 million, I don't think there's any board in the world that would say, no, I don't think we want that, you know. So as long as excludes those two things, I'm fine with the five.
Alderman Jettie.
So if, God forbid, you know, there were a situation where, you know, I don't know, a war or something, and, you know, there happens to be more than five needs, is there anything that we could do in that case if we vote for five, where that's it, once we reach five, it's, no matter what happens, we're stuck until the next fiscal year?
That was my understanding of the intention.
I'll set Alderman.
I don't know if that's legal. The statute says you have to have an override provision. It doesn't say you can limit the number that you have. If you get to the point where you no longer have an override provision, you may be in violation of the national legislation. We may find that out only when we send this up to the AG, Secretary of State, and Commissioner of DRA.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think what the five does is it makes sure that the board's not going, hey, I'd like to have one of these. Let's just do it, right? We're actually thinking thoughtfully about, hey, we only have five of these, and God forbid, we're up to three, and we're like, this fourth one, we're not going to do something stupid with it. We're going to do it if it's needed by some kind of, you know, I don't want to say disaster, but some kind of real need where, you know, that's, so that's kind of, you know, you don't want to use all five in the first quarter of the year, and then you're like, well, we're going to do the rest of the year, right? So they're only there for emergency, really. And so I think that kind of lets us think about them as opposed to just like, we know we're going to have another one, we can do whatever we want, and I don't think that's the right approach. I think it's good to have some form of limit. I think last week I said, or two weeks ago, I said I'd do it at two, so I'm glad it's at five. At least it's more amendable to other people, so.
Alderman Dowd.
Just to satisfy my own curiosity, if we did do five and then something happened, and we needed some money, if we transferred money from another city account, would that be in violation of the cap?
No.
So you get to that point, you better hope it's not catastrophic.
Depending on if there are other limitations on that account. So if you're talking about money that will raise through the sale of bonds, you can't change that.
No, I was thinking more in the line of.
Like, I know, but you can't just say blank at least. Yeah, you can always do that. If some money's in a special account because it was received through a grant, we can't alter the purpose of those funds.
I was thinking if it's like $3 million emergency, you could transfer it out of SURF. That's been done by this board previously. That's why SURF's in such a screwed up place.
SURF is a reserve fund. I think there are ways to amend that, but I don't think it's as easy as you say. Reserve funds have special rules. But generally speaking, if it looked like the overtime budget in the police department was not going to be fully spent, yeah, generally you can move that.
Alderman Clemens, do you have your hand up?
No, I'm good. I did, but I'm good. Thank you.
Alderman Guevara.
I mean, if there's worry over, after going up to five, I mean, we could further amend saying, I don't know, takes a unanimous opinion of this board to go over five and just up that threshold, so there's always an option. I mean, I'd be open to that if we feel that we always want to have an avenue to keep going. I think a 15-person unanimous approval is a big burden to surpass. That would make people feel more comfortable, and like we might hit a wall with putting a cap on it. I mean, something to consider.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you. I really like that idea. I think that's a, and I applaud you for coming up with it. But my question would be, when you say unanimous, you used the word 15, which kind of gave me a little anxiety. If for some reason we were down a member, would you be willing, if you were to amend your amendment, be willing to say unanimous of those in attendance?
Maybe those able to be in attendance.
Yeah, whether they be Zoom or. 15 could be a very difficult number because I know I'm personally going through some things that I might not be able to be there, and you might not have a 15-person board. And anybody at any given time could have that. That would really hurt us.
Miss the bus all the time.
Yeah, or miss the bus.
Inhorn doors.
Alderman Guevara.
I guess the one thing, and I don't mind it, but the one thing that would concern me, and I don't see it being on this board, but in the future, I mean, we could hold a special meeting, get seven people here at a really odd time, and then override it from there on out. It's kind of a far-fetched circumstance, but, I mean, you could do it.
Madam. I just wanted to, may I respond to that?
Yes, yes.
I'd be willing, if you were to set a number of in attendance with a minimum of 10 or perhaps, you know, even that. I just have a little anxiety of you saying a unanimous board and 15 as being the number, so just to think about. Thank you.
If we can just have the conversation keep going, I just want to think on that for a minute.
Okay. Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, I personally don't think it's necessary. I don't think we're going to get to the point where we're at five. I think it would be, there would be some very big catastrophes that happened if we got to that point. And I think, I think the, you know, I think if we were at that point, we would have to just be very careful about what we're doing. But I don't foresee that ever really being an issue.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to point out that if we actually had a dire enough circumstance or like one where people felt politically bold enough to send, to try to have the Harry Potter approach where you have the secret meeting that no one knew about, if that happens and the rest of the legislature, the other eight members still exist and can still act and say, okay, well, now that we're meeting, we don't like that, or we're taking it back or something along those lines, so there is a check in that kind of built in.
Okay. Further discussion. Okay. Alderman Guevara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question through you to Attorney Bolton. Do you foresee this cap at five being an issue that the state would put up? Just in your opinion.
I don't anticipate that, but it's a possibility.
Of course.
I've never seen anything like it. I've never seen it approved. I've never seen it rejected. I don't really have enough experience. No one has enough experience to answer that question with any degree of accuracy.
I think it would be my opinion that we keep as is now, and then if we do get rejected, we can go down that road of looking at other avenues.
So the motion is to amend.
Yep.
By?
Motion would be to amend Section D by saying the board cannot override, or the board cannot override more than five times in a fiscal year.
You've heard the motion. Further discussion? Saying no, all those in favor say aye.
I've got a question about the fiscal years.
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to be the one to have to write it. We're now in fiscal year '25, and you'll be working on the budget for fiscal year '26. So how do you reconcile your five times if in order to pass the budget in May or June, you make an override then? Does that count for fiscal year '25? And then come July 1st, you get another five, or is that, or is that your first of five? Because I was fine until you said fiscal year.
Okay. I'll take an opinion of the board and see which direction we want to go on that.
Okay. Alderman Lopez.
If we said relative to a fiscal year, then that means you could only override relative to that fiscal year rather than within it, meaning you had to do it within a fiscal year.
I can write that.
Would everybody else, everybody else go with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So moved.
That's basically what I was going to say.
Okay. So the motion before us is no more than five times. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, you were talking about the FY '26 budget. If this passes the first budget, this will be applicable to '27. Yeah. That was my illustration.
Okay.
I'm well aware of that.
Alderman O'Brien, do I have a motion?
Yes, you do, Madam President. I would like to motion that March 10, 2025, special meeting of the Board of Alderman, so be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn.
Madam President, should we at least table the legislation before us, perhaps?
Yeah.
Before we adjourn?
Before we go, that's probably a good idea. Is that your motion?
It would be, but I have one clarifying question, if I might.
Okay.
Are we going to set another meeting to discuss the other changes sometime in the future, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Dowd.
So it, two ways to go. We adjourn now, it would then go to the public hearing. If we're going to adjourn to another meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Then the public hearing will get further out because you have to have so many days for a public hearing. Just want to clarify that. So I'm fine with tabling it. Are you going to table it to a date? No, I wouldn't do it to a date certain because Donna will go crazy.
All right. Alderman Clemens.
I will make a motion to table until a date decided on by President Wiltshire.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion that the March 10, 2025, special meeting of the Board of Alderman, so be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:25 PM. Thank you, everyone.